Time being 7:00 PM on March 25th, 2024. Quorum of the Planning Board being present, I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Agenda Item A, which is Approval of Minutes, which is for January 8th, 2024, and January 22nd, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning Board minutes of January 8th, 2024.
Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning Board minutes of January 22nd, 2024.
Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Before I move on to Agenda Item B, I'll let anyone in the audience who might be here for Agenda Item E, which is 1438 Main Street. The applicant has requested to have that continued to our next meeting. So if you're here for that, you can leave without worrying about missing anything because nothing will be discussed. All right, so that moves us on to Agenda Item B, which is Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Are any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B2, which is Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have quite a full agenda scheduled for our next meeting on March 25th with seven new hearings. We have two family suites at 215 Marshall Street and 24 Wayside Road. We have three signed special permits on the agenda. Two are for electronic message board signs, one for the library, one for the senior center, and then the third is a commercial sign for business at 1921 Main Street. We will have the 910 Andover Street Site Plan Review Land Disturbance Permit for an Educational Work-Life Development for Melmark. And finally, the zoning bylaw amendment hearing for the MBTA Communities Warren Article. Next, just another reminder that I am holding planners' office hours at the end of the month. It's the senior center on Tuesday, March 26th, from 10:30 to 12:30, and the library on Thursday, March 28th, from 11:00 to 1:00. Again, the goal of these office hours is to help educate residents on the planning process, how zoning works, and current projects in an informal conversational setting. And more information about that is on the town website. Item number three, another reminder for the local election. The annual town election will take place on Saturday, April 6th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I encourage folks to check the town website to confirm their precinct and their voting location. If you have any questions, reach out to the town clerk's office. Last item of note, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, better known as NIMCOG, is going to be kicking off their At Home and Greater Lowell Housing Summit tomorrow at 1:00 PM at Mill Number 5. Speakers include State Representative James Arcieri of the 2nd Middlesex District, followed by a panel discussion on the power of partnerships at the Lowell Regional and state and federal levels by several folks from the Mass Housing Partnership, EOHLC, and others. The event's objectives include cultivating a shared commitment to address our region's housing challenges, develop goals for the At Home and Greater Lowell Strategy, identify resources, contacts, and other information available to help with the planning process. Again, that's tomorrow, March 12th, at Mill Number 5. And for more information, folks can go to nmco.org/ahgl. So nimco.org/athomeandgreaterleal. Thank you.
I had a question, Ms. Laura, if I could. The funds that were allocated or are being allocated for the message boards, for the library and the senior center, where are they coming from?
Those were allocated at last town meeting, special time in October.
I figured that. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions? I think, I'm pretty sure at the beginning I may have said March 25th.
Yes.
I mean the 11th because I was looking at the wrong agenda. So if anybody didn't know it was the 11th other than me, it is the 11th. All right.
Oh, sorry. One more note, Mr. Chairman. I had mentioned to some members ahead of time, there's an error in our schedule. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday, April 15th, which is not only school vacation week but Patriots Day. We will not be here that day. The town hall will be closed. So I wanted to propose to change the schedule to have a meeting on Monday, April 8th instead. And that still gives us a buffer week between the March 25th meeting and does not put us on top of April 29th, excuse me. So if April 8th is okay with everyone, I'd like to...
We have a motion to change our first April meeting to April 8th instead of April 16th?
15th.
15th, sorry.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, New York Road Map 81 Lot 183 A&R Plan Review.
So I'll actually be presenting that one. So at a previous town meeting, the town meeting was authorized to sell parcels of land, town-owned land. And there were three abutters interested in the parcel on New York Road, parcel 81-183. And the abutters came to the agreement that they would purchase together and then subdivide the plan to have three semi-equal parts absorbing to each of their properties. None of these three lots would be considered buildable on their own, and they're just going to be adding to their own acreage. And because this is a town-owned parcel, the town is putting forth the A&R Plan at the expense of the applicants. And then they'll have the plan recorded, and the deeds will be completed by town council.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Will you endorse that?
Sorry?
We have to endorse that.
Yeah, it's here.
So do we have a motion to endorse the A&R?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we endorse the A&R Plan at New York Road Lot Map 81 Lot 183.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item C, 20 Glenwood Road, 2551 Main Street. Site Plan Review, Special Permit, Land Disturbance Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So move.
Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you're settled, gentlemen, just give your names to the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design, representing the applicant.
I'm Sean McGus of Woodland Design, representing the applicant.
Yes.
All right. So I was mentioning we're representing the applicant for this...
Can I just, if you don't mind, would you just tilt that just up? There you go.
Sure. Representing the applicant for the Site Plan Review, Special Permit, and Land Disturbance Application for the properties located at 20 Glenwood Road and 2551 Main Street. The lot is owned South Village Business. There's an existing single-family residence on the properties. The lots total approximately 27,000 square feet with a combined 550 feet of frontage along Maplewood Avenue, Glenwood Road, Main Street, and Adams Street. There are no wetland resource areas on the property. The site is relatively flat with a high elevation of 103 along Main Street to a low of approximately 102 along Maplewood Avenue. There is an existing dwelling, garage, pavement, lawn, and utility connections on the property. This proposal consists of the construction of a 3,400-square-foot four-unit multifamily residence with associated driveway, utilities, drainage, and grading. These units will be two-bedroom units. The existing curb cut along Main Street will be closed and replaced with curbing in a sidewalk. And the proposed entrance to development will be located off of Glenwood Avenue. This proposal consists of a reduction of approximately 16% of the impervious surface on the property. A shallow infiltration basin is proposed in the eastern corner of the property, sized to meet the water quality and recharge standards. And this basin additionally handles the 100-year storm without triggering the emergency overflow. For this project, we're requesting a special permit for the construction of a multifamily dwelling within the South Village Business Zone. We're additionally requesting a waiver to zoning by law, Section 6, 111D, to provide sidewalks along the site frontage. There's currently no sidewalk existing in Glenwood Road, Maplewood Avenue, or Adams Road. And as such, we're only proposing sidewalk in Main Street. We're also requesting a waiver to zoning by law, Section 8, 26A, to require that one parking space per unit shall be completely enclosed. Just due to the geometry of the lot, a detached garage would decrease the aesthetic value of the development, and the rear of the garage would be facing Main Street. We have since received review letters from the town as well as TEC as part of the peer review process. We'll be addressing these comments in the next middle, but wanted to open up the meeting to hear any feedback from the board. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I'm able.
Is it okay if I open it up?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things that you're looking for waivers for. The 22-foot width of the driveway, I know it starts out wider, but then it narrows a little bit. Is there a reason why you couldn't make it 24 feet continuous into the site?
That's a conundrum, Mr. Chamber. We have a set of DPW regulations that said the driveway can't be wider than 22 feet. And we have a zoning board regulation that says 24 feet. We don't have a problem doing 24 feet, but at one of the preliminary IDR meetings, it was brought to our attention that if it was coming in off of Main Street, then it's under Mass DOT's jurisdiction. This is coming under DPW. So we don't have a problem with the 24 feet. We prefer it. So if we can work that out between the two different regulations, we don't have a problem doing the 24 feet.
Okay. Is IDR firm on 22 feet?
I'll have to review the roadway rules and regulations with the town engineer.
Well, either way, I mean, if at worst, we can always prove it saying that the wider, if DPW's fine with it, is okay.
Okay.
And if they prefer that's fine. You know what I mean? We can cover it both ways.
Yeah.
Because it's not a problem.
And I'm sure for day-to-day vehicles, it's more than fine. But the occasional larger vehicle or Amazon van or something, you know, people not familiar with the area, I worry about that.
What I believe the process is, and it's been a long time since this has come up, so I think the superintendent can grant that waiver. But we, on our side of the table, 22 feet, 24 feet, 26 feet, we're fine with it.
Okay. And currently, your pedestrian access comes around the building and then sort of faces the whole parking lot. So we have two-bedroom suites. I'm assuming there's going to be children. What if those children want to walk out to Main Street and, you know, go down towards the... I think there's some restaurant just right on the corner there by Silver Lake, dog grooming place, things like that. My question would be, how hard would it be to get... I know there's sidewalk issues in general as far as you want to just do Main Street and stop. And IDR is already pushing to go a little bit more. But in general, you know, if we have a driveway there and people are coming out of the building and want to walk towards Main Street, how would they do that safely with marked pedestrian access so that they don't have to worry about traffic coming in and out of the property?
What we could do, Ms. Chamber, is where we have the five parking spaces, where we have those five parking spaces, right at the end of that parking lot, instead of going into the street, just extend the sidewalk out to Main Street, if you follow that.
Yeah, that would be fine. Basically, it just... I think if anybody is walking, you know, they might want to walk the pet and go down Glenwood, but more than likely, they'd probably rather walk on sidewalks, which means Main Street. I think we want to make sure we give them safe access from the residences to those sidewalks.
Yeah, so we would just extend it out instead of coming out to the street. That way, it would be almost in the middle of the property in case they wanted to go west or east.
Yeah, that sounds nice.
Main Street, we always think of Main Street as north and south, but it's really east and west.
It is. That was all my questions for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Lozati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of continuing along with this walkway discussion here. So are you proposing the walkway coming out of like the top of that driveway, and then pedestrians would walk across the lot to get to your walkway around the building?
So we already have a walk here?
Yep.
So what we do is this.
Okay, so and then you would extend the walkway from around the building?
Yeah, it comes around here. You have to walk, you're all on pavement, you're not out in the street, no traffic, just extend it across the path.
Okay. All right, and then I think my other question... So you had mentioned the waiver for the enclosed parking spaces, which I can see that here. But are you planning on doing any provisions for, you know, EV charging or any of that? I know that's one of the bigger barriers to adoption there is if there's no internal spots.
Well, there wouldn't be an internal spot for EV charging anyway. It would be outside. Fire Department does not want them inside. So that would just be... I think the building code requires to have at least one under the building code. So, you know, it would probably be one of the spaces closest to the building there. I think that's already in effect now, isn't it, Alex?
Yes, that's a part of the stretch building code, which the town has adopted.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay.
Great. Yeah, with that, I think that's all the questions I have.
All right, Ms. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So where are we, Mr. Cuco, with the sidewalks? I know the town's looking to have sidewalks around.
Well, we got a memo from the DPW that they didn't have a problem with the waiver for the sidewalks on, I call it the three side streets. We're going to put the sidewalk on Main Street because we need to close up that curb cut anyways. It's just, if you've seen it, it's a really wide curb cut. So we got a estimate, not an estimate, we got a sidewalk estimate to put into the fund for $82,000. We happen to have 413 feet of sidewalk on a street that shouldn't even really have a sidewalk. That's not in your domain anymore, but somewhere in town, we're going to have to have a discussion about that because that is, you know, given the nature of the project, it's only a little over half an acre. We're only getting four units out of it. If we had a 20-unit building, $80,000 for a sidewalk, you know, would be relative to the budget. But, you know, we still want to make sure that we can keep the rents or sales, depending on what we end up doing, what the units... Try to keep it so that it's somewhat reasonable.
Okay. So on Main Street, we're doing granite curbing and concrete sidewalks?
Well, Main Street will be up to Mass DOT.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's already...
That's what we normally do, right?
Yeah, but this section of, all this whole section of 338 is asphalt curbing. So it'll be up to Mass DOT. Whatever they tell us to put in, we'll do.
Okay. So one of my other questions is, why didn't we come in off of Mass, on Main Street rather than coming off of Glenwood?
It just, the site worked out better coming off of Glenwood because we have that low area where we have drainage coming down to, what's that street down on?
Adams.
To Adams Street. So it just worked out better that way. We had it originally that way. This way, the fire department and the emergency vehicles can come up Glenwood. They don't have to turn into the site. Like, because it's a small site, so it's just like a single-family house. They'll just pull up to the front door, and, you know, it's only 25 feet to the front entrance. So if we had it on Main Street, then we had to make sure that they could come in because they wouldn't want to, you know, park out on Main Street if they had to come in and take care of an emergency response. So that was two separate reasons for doing it that way.
Okay. So what do you think about the idea of doing some sidewalks on Glenwood Road as well? I know we don't want to do all the sidewalks, but, I mean, you're putting a driveway in there anyway, which is going to take up some of the sidewalk area. So, I mean, I'm thinking more for the residents that are going to access Glenwood, Main Street from Maplewood and the other surrounding streets as a access to Main Street along the sidewalk and then cross, a full sidewalk on Glenwood, and then you cross the driveway, and then you come out to Main Street where there'll be sidewalks again, so.
Yeah, well, again, we're going to have to work through that.
Just an idea, I mean...
Part of the challenge here is to, even to do any of this sidewalk, it wouldn't fit in the street physically. We'd have to have an easement on our property anyways. And then it's like, okay, who takes care of it? Is the town going to plow it? Do we have to take care of it? So somewhere along the way, we're going to have to have some discussions with, used to be in your domain, it's no longer. So, but we'll have to work through that.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's a good compromise if that would be something that...
Well, that's what, that was my intent, to try to resolve, you know, rather than doing all of them, what if we do this or that, whatever. So you don't have any renderings established at all for this site, do you?
I believe we do.
Yeah, we do.
Architecturals?
Yeah.
I don't need them tonight, but I'm just, you know, if you could present them at our next meeting.
Yeah, we have a full set. I should have been in the set, but I apologize.
No problem. It's like, it's easier for us to look at it and see what's going to be down there and how it's going to look on the street and so forth and so on. And for the public's interest as well, to see it possibly, you know, so.
It's a nice-looking building.
Yeah, so two-bedroom units. I thought I seen it somewhere in here, three-bedroom units, but...
Yeah, that was a misprint.
Okay, yeah, fine. Thank you for clarifying that. And with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. So I'll start from the end and go backwards then because since you brought up the renderings, since the side of your building is the front to Main Street, the rendering is going to matter to me because I want to know what the side of the building is going to look like. This can't just be the regular sides that a normal building would have because in this case, one side faces Main Street. So, you know, when you've got the backside of this is up against two abutters, I don't know what you have for landscaping or buffering going between, you know, the back of the building and whoever the abutters are. But, you know, whether it's about what the back of the building looks like or what you're not going to see because there's buffering is another thing that'll matter.
Yeah, there's a fence there, but we'll give you some photos of it. I think what you'll find, Mr. Johnson, is that because the nature of the buildings to meet the requirement, they can't do like townhouses. So it's a nice-looking gable end. It doesn't have a doorway. It doesn't have a porch. It doesn't have a stairway. So it won't be all that, it won't be really busy. It'll, you know, so it'll look like...
But, I mean, it's like the same thing we've done with some of the other places, like whether it was on Main Street, you know, actually, they were actually coming out on Main, but the way they were putting the building, or even North Street, when we did the ones up at the corner of North Street. Because of the way you see the buildings, you know, even if it's full, you know, windows or whatever it is on those sides, you know, and like I said, I don't have the rendering, so I don't know what you have on the side yet. You know, maybe what's there is fine. I just don't know yet. But if it's, you know, if it was meant to be a solid side, that's not going to look right to me coming on the Main Street side because you're going to see it right over the driveway and the parking area. So that's why I'd want to know what it's going to look like and, you know, what kind of landscaping is going to be out there so you also know what you aren't going to see.
Yeah, I think you'll find because the units are, there's two on each floor. So you've got two here, one, two on the first floor, three, four on the second floor. So they have windows on all sides, unlike if you had a, like in an apartment, you know, a normal type apartment building. So when you're looking at it from Main Street, that gable end looks like a single-family home.
But that's my point.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll get the elevations to you. I'm sure you'll be happy.
And then, you know, I don't want to dwell on the sidewalk then because, again, it isn't us anymore on that. But, I mean, are there any sidewalks anywhere internally in that area?
No. These are very narrow roads.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the only thing is, you know, and I can't imagine where this falls on their plan for sidewalks, but I got to figure it's got to be way, 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 way down the list of where we're going to be putting sidewalks. So it just feels weird to have just this one sidewalk internally on the streets. Like, I could see that top corner, like coming out of the driveway and curving into Main Street, you know, but just because of this, because of where it is. I mean, but going all the way down, that's it'd be the only sidewalk in the entire neighborhood down there. I just don't know why because I don't see where they're connecting it ever, anytime in the near distant future.
Well, we might do a hybrid of what Mr. Fattaya asked instead of having, or Ms. Lozati asked, instead of having that sidewalk there, we may continue to sidewalk up to our driveway. But, I mean, from the DPW's point of view, they're saying, okay, the bylaw says you have to have sidewalk everywhere. We really don't want it there, but we'll be glad to take your money. In years past, it was like, okay, we gave them the money for what it would cost us to build it, which would probably be half. It's $200 a foot. It might cost us $110 a foot. If that was the case, then, you know, it was reasonable. We wouldn't be making any issue out of it, but...
Well, like I said, it's a dwell too hard because they're the ones who are going to have to go up yea or nay on that, so.
Yeah, so we'll have to have that discussion with them. And then, you know, it may be that we run the sidewalk up Glenwood. It's still going to have to be on our property because there's just not enough... The road's narrow, the right of way's narrow, and I think that was part of the reasoning that DPW said, well, yeah, the waiver is probably going to be appropriate because if this was somewhere where, like, where they thought they might be getting too soon, they'd say, no, just build a sidewalk, no waiver. But just the dollar figure is what puts it out of proportion, so.
All right, that's it for me for right now.
Mr. Chairman, I just, sorry, just want to revisit one thing. I know all the properties and renovations we've had on Main Street, including your recent one at 1470 plus, you know, 70 this, 70 that, those have all said cement, concrete for the sidewalk that's on Main Street. And I know you've said you follow Mass DOT, but my preference, I guess, would be that we say these are going to be cement, concrete because that's consistent with what we've asked for all the way along 38. And if Mass DOT says it doesn't have to be, and you want to come back and ask for relief because it's not in the area or something like that, I would find that preferable, but...
We're showing it as asphalt, aren't we?
It says bituminous concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, because we're connecting two pieces of existing sidewalk.
But eventually, if Mass DOT were to do another renovation, right, all the other sidewalk that they put in would be cement.
Yeah, and they may tell us to do that. But we had an experience where our client spent about $150,000 to put in granite curbing and a concrete sidewalk on a building that's not even two years old, and it was all ripped up by Mass DOT. So we never know what they're going to do. I don't think they know what they're going to do down that section yet anyways. But that's why we're showing it as bituminous right now. If, when we... Because even to close the driveway, we need to get a permit from Mass DOT. So we'll see what they say.
Okay. Thank you.
I got any questions, Mr. Chairman? So I have two questions, Mr. Cuco. One is, are they going to be rentals or are they going to be condominiums?
Right now, they're going to be rentals. We're not excluding the fact that they could be condos depending on if the cost of construction stays where it is and the cost of lending stays where it is, we may have to sell them. Or what the owner is most likely going to do is he'll probably prepare condominium documents and maybe sell one unit in order to help finance. And he'd like to keep them as rentals because it's a good income stream for his family, you know, going forward, so.
Okay, all right. My other question is, please don't forget the postal regulations as far as putting in some type of CBU box for the postal letter carriers to come and deliver because they won't deliver to the house. They'll have to be delivering to a box. If you can put that into your plans next time we see you, so it'll be good, so.
Could we do that in the form of a note? Because I think the location of it is up to the postmaster.
I think if you put that in your plans and submit, show the plans to the postmaster, I'm sure they'll be...
Yeah, it's one of those...
Just so they can come in, deliver, and then go back.
Yeah, it's like, it'd be like a box with four regulars and then two parcel lockers underneath it.
I'm thinking, I was looking maybe near the dumpster somewhere there as you come in, off through the driveway and come down to the end of the driveway and somewhere near there.
I would think, maybe, I think we'd put it out close to the street because it's a small street and he probably wouldn't, the carrier wouldn't, the carrier wouldn't have to, you know, they could just park like they do now to deliver the mail and go do that there, so.
I think they'd probably be pulling into the driveway, but then turn around once they get in.
Yeah, well, I think if we put it, we're talking about putting it to the right side of the driveway, they can still pull in if they want, but instead of having to go all the way to the back of the property, and then that way, as each owner comes in, they can get the mail as they're coming in, so... But, thank you for reminding us of that because we always forget about it.
Yep, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Alright, with that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just one comment before we move along. If and when you folks get to the point where you decide if it's going to be sold units or rental units, just make sure that you contact the assessor's office because they'll wanna know for addressing purposes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we'll probably do that as rentals, and the only reason that I mentioned it is because it may affect how the meters are put in, so that's...
Yeah, that does affect that as well.
So, excuse me, were you putting in four water meters?
I think they only let us put in one.
Okay, and then, I'll shoot that if you wanted to do a condominium complex.
Then you have to put sub-meters in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, anything that's rental, that's the way they do it, and if it turned into a condominium later and we have the sub-meters, you know, the town gets one water bill, the association pays it, and then they divvy it up, so...
Alright, so, we have 7:40 on the 25th. We have a motion to continue to 7:40 on the 25th.
So, I'm off.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item D, 402 Main Street. This is continued from our 226th meeting. Once you're all set, just give your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name's Garrett Piccirillo, civil engineer with GPI. With us also is John Akosia, attorney for the project, as well as Jim Waterman, representing the applicant GR Development, and also Bob Ballinger is here from GPI as well to answer any traffic questions that may come up during this. So, I actually just wanted to start with this comparison of the original plan that we submitted versus the revised plan, which, as you can see, was revised substantially from what we originally submitted. The reason being some mostly concerns that came up during our previous planning board meeting that we were looking to address from a site safety, site circulation point of view mostly, as well as a setback that was shown, or I should say revised since then along this side-street collab road. We were originally treating that as a side setback, and we were informed that that is incorrect, so we actually increased that, the setback for the building, as well as the pavement setback along collab road, to 20 feet, 20-foot side pavement setback and a 25-foot side building setback in accordance with the bylaws. So, in order to make the site work while meeting that setback and the concerns that the board brought up, we came up with this revised layout, which, as you can see, involves actually shifting the building and flipping it essentially, or mirroring it. As you can see on the original layout here, we had a single curb cut, entrance and exit at the center of the site here, and vehicles enter and they could either veer off to the car wash queuing lanes or the pay stations here, or they could continue straight and enter this vacuum area as you, as the board brought up and is clear on this plan. There is a bit of a, I'll call it, potential site safety, kinda circulation congestion issues at this intersection is, it's kinda the main entrance and exit for vehicles, whether they're going to the car wash, going to the vax, or exiting either as well. So, what we did was actually flipped the building around, as I said, and we shifted the vacuums to this, oh, I'm sorry, we shifted the vacuums to this opposite side of the building here, okay? And, as you can see, a major change that we made as well was actually splitting the driveway into two, one being an entrance only here and the other being an exit only here. That was really to, we're trying to address the board's concerns, and after we looked at it, we actually thought this was a much better layout for the site. Currently, there is two curb cuts as well, one on each end, one's an entrance, one's an exit only, so we are mimicking that, I'll say. We were able to shift the driveways a little further from the intersection, or I should say, the exit driveway a little further from the intersection than it is currently. And, yeah, so, those are kinda the major changes that we made there. You'll also notice that we had to move the pay stations, we moved them to the rear of the site here, so I guess you do get a bit more queuing now than you did prior to the pay stations. The reason being, the pay stations actually can't be located within this 30-foot wide gas easement right here, it's a Kinder Morgan steel gas line, 16-inch gas line that actually runs through the site, so that's why you'll notice we kinda left that easement clear with any structures because it's their requirement. So, another major concern that the board had at the previous meeting was, I guess, the lack of a bypass lane, so this layout was meant to address that as well. Previously, vehicles would enter the car wash if they wanted to, if they changed their mind, I guess, they would've been after the pay stations, they would've already paid, but if they changed their mind or there was an emergency or something, they wouldn't have been able to easily just bypass the building. This new layout alleviates that issue. Vehicles actually, it's actually better in the fact that they haven't even entered the pay stations yet before they have the opportunity to bypass the site, so if they did change their mind, they can easily bypass here and go to the vax if they want or continue out of the site. Also, the reason for this driveway here, this one-way driveway along the front here is just for vehicles that choose to access the vax before they go to the car wash, we have to give them a way to get there because people are allowed to do that if they choose to. That I am, oh, actually, I will add to that, the other item that we added, and it was just brought up previous, at the previous presentation, is that we actually added EV stations, EV parking, we added two of them, and that is to address the stretch code, which has been adopted by the town. It's really 20% of the total parking spaces are actually required for a commercial business, so that results in two. We are based on the number of parking spaces we have, including the vax, because they're parking spaces we really are subject to having two of them. So, these are located here, down at the bottom of the parking lane, and we have two of them right here, okay? So, those are all the major revisions that we made to the site plan. With that, I just, I'm gonna flip over to the actual site plan set, and I just, most of what I wanted to touch on beyond just the site layout changes is some drainage-related items, and I touched on this at the previous meeting, but I just wanted to quickly reiterate this. I know this has been a little bit of a point of contention with the abutter, so I just wanna kinda clarify the whole situation with this drainage. And I'm gonna just start on this existing conditions plan here and just kinda explain what's going on today. So, currently, collab road here, as well as a portion of Main Street, actually drains onto our, onto the site, okay? And everything on site, actually, she flows or just overland flows to the low point in the site, which is actually right here, and I'll zoom in a little bit. So, there's this concrete drainage structure right here along the property line, it actually straddles the property line, there's easements in place with Wamisett next door. That drainage structure is an inlet, and it's taking all of the stormwater from the site, I should say, the majority of the stormwater from the site. Everything she flows to it, and there's an opening on the front of the concrete structure, stormwater enters, and it discharges via these two drain pipes that go onto the Wamisett property, where they then go to an underground drainage system and ultimately out to the wetland to the rear of the Wamisett site. So, that's kinda the situation right now, and we're essentially, we're proposing to continue to use this drainage structure as our ultimate discharge point for our site because frankly, we have to, and we have rights to do so. So, I just wanted to kinda go over that, and then also, you'll notice there's a retaining wall here along the Wamisett site, you may have noticed it, essentially follows the majority of the property line here. The reason that this inlet drainage structure was constructed, it was constructed at the time of the Wamisett project, and the reason is because Wamisett, as we are, they were proposing to raise their grades significantly on the site, okay? And in doing so, that, hence the retaining wall, right? So, they installed this retaining wall, Wamisett's side is much higher in elevation than our site, okay? So, when that wall was installed, it completely constricted the drainage from our site, from this project site. Originally, and I have plans showing this, originally, all of this drainage that I'm saying she flows to this underground, or I'm sorry, this inlet structure here, it used to continue on onto the Wamisett property and ultimately to the wetland. When they built this, it was a literal wall blocking the site, which then caused flooding on the site. It was worked out with the owners of this site in Wamisett, and they came to an agreement, and there's a recorded drainage easement and maintenance agreement that I actually have, and that was to alleviate that problem. It was to say, you know, we gotta deal with this flooding on our site, and they did so. So, that's why they worked together to kinda, the two owners, I should say, worked together to kinda come up with this and come to an agreement, okay? And the agreement clearly says that we have rights to continue to use this as long as we don't increase impervious areas, really what it says, which we are not. We actually have a overall decrease in impervious area of about 5,500 square feet for the site, so... Hopefully, that gives you an idea of what's going on now, and then I'll just quickly go to, I'm just gonna flip over to the grading and drainage plan, and I guess the intent of the drainage design hasn't, it hasn't changed from what I presented originally, but in a nutshell, what we're proposing to do is, you know, a series of deep-sunk, put a catch basins throughout the site that are gonna collect all of the pave, all of the runoff from the paved areas, and ultimately discharge into one of two underground infiltration systems. So, there's one here, it's this rectangular shape here, as well as this one up here. So, those are infiltration systems, we've done test pits, the town witnessed the test pits, and those are meant to recharge groundwater, recharge runoff to groundwater as well as treated. So, it's a significant improvement from what was, what's there today. And you'll see, in the end, they all kinda combine at this manhole and then combine into this structure that I just described. So, ultimately, it's the same situation in terms of the drainage patterns, you know, where things are going, where they're conveyed, however, we are greatly improving it because we are treating, infiltrating, so reducing volume greatly. In fact, for a 10-year, I'll use a 10-year storm event as an example, we're actually decreasing the runoff rate of stormwater from 7.8 CFS, I took that from the Wamisett drainage report, 7.8 CFS, we're reducing it to 5.3. It's a two and a half CFS difference, that's a lot for a 10-year storm. In addition to that, with the infiltration systems, we're reducing volume, so the volume of water that is going to go to the structure, we're reducing it by 32%, but again, very substantial, and it's all treated. So, it's a huge improvement, and I just wanted to kinda go over that a little bit here. So, yeah, that's kinda the overall drainage design. Quickly hop over to the utility plan, kinda unchanged from before for the most part, but we're proposing all new utility connections, water and gas connections to the main and Main Street, new utility, no, I'm sorry, new electrical service, we're actually gonna pop a new utility pole on the site to maintain the service that's there now, it's an overhead service to the building back here, we're gonna put in a utility pole and run it underground to the building here. And again, the EV parking is here, so there's two transformers, one for the EV parking that's required. Sewer, we're actually proposing a reclaim system, that's what the series of tanks is here, so all of the car wash discharge is going to either exit out the end here or into the reclaim system where it is then, you know, reused. So, we're actually, we're connecting, so we're proposing to connect sewer to collab road where it connects today as well, and that actually discharges out to the rear of the site. Quickly, erosion control, we've provided a revised erosion control, typical, you know, construction exit at the exit, inlet protection at all the catch basins, silt fences needed along the property lines, and erosion control blankets on the slopes. And we've also provided a revised landscape plan, I won't get into that too much, but it's all here, we're providing trees throughout the site and shrubs, et cetera, kind of in the correct location, what we think are the best locations. So, with that, I will allow the board to ask any questions if they have any.
Just a second, I didn't remember which one, from the previous one, but if the sewer's going onto that side, DPW, I've already checked, because obviously, the discharge of water here is different than your normal business, I would suspect, so that, whatever's on that road can handle that?
So, collab road is a private road owned by Univar, the chemical company in the rear, so access, the permits to tie into the overall sewer system would be through the DPW and water connections, et cetera, but there would have to be some level of permission from Univar to do that, I imagine.
I was just talking about volume, like, it can handle the volume and get it out to Main Street, like, without a problem?
There isn't a gravity issue that I'm aware of in that area, so I would think so.
Alright.
And there wasn't anything brought up during the initial project review way back when, so I don't think so.
I didn't remember if that's how it was being done all along or if it changed because of the shifting of everything?
Nope.
So, that's what it was always going, was out there?
And I apologize, I shouldn't have ended that yet. I also just wanted to quickly go over that, we received comment letters, one from Ms. Louder directly, planning board letter, as well as the peer review letter from Beta. We, I'd say we've addressed most of the comments, there's a few remaining ones, but there are loose ends to us, there's nothing in there that is concerning, we're going to address the comments. There is one comment, though, that I did wanna bring up, and again, I'll get into the waiver request too, apologize, I should've touched on that. So, in Ms. Louder's letter, it's actually comment 15, and it's the requirement for one-way drive, or one-way drive aisles to be a minimum width of 14 feet, and anything below that would require a special permit from the planning board. So, I guess I was looking for some clarification on a couple of these items, and I'll just flip over to this render here. There are a couple items, I will say that a bit of an oversight, I should've made these 14 feet, and I'm happy to, one being this driveway, one-way driveway down here that I'm highlighting here, that's 12 feet, I can easily make that 14 feet, same goes for this adjacent driveway exit here, I pinched it down to 12 feet, it can be 4 feet, 14 feet, I'm sorry. So, those, I'm 100% planning on addressing. The only ones that I had questions on where it was mentioned that our queuing lanes here are 10 feet wide, so I guess I was looking for some direction on whether that would meet the intent of the requirement or not, being that, I understand they're 10-foot wide, but they're queuing lanes, they're not, I guess I wouldn't really call them drive aisles, but also, there's no physical barrier here, so this is a 30-foot wide sea of pavement here, so I don't know if that falls under this requirement. I guess same would go for this 12-foot lane, although I should be, I can look at increasing that to 14 feet too, I can because I put a two-foot striped area here, so I can easily make that one 14 feet and just have striping if I need to. The other one is actually at these pay stations, you'll notice that we have nine feet between each of them, and these are raised concrete islands in the middle here, so, for example, this inside lane, this inside lane would actually be nine feet, meaning you have a physical curb on the left and you have a raised island on the right. I don't know if that's, that falls under this as well. The reason, we don't like to do these much wider, any wider than nine feet, because actually, it's desirable for the, when a car pulls up, you don't want it to be too wide because they open their door, they end up having to open their door to access the pay station, so nine feet is the number, kinda the sweet spot that we've learned. So, I guess that's my, that is my question, is the town requiring that we actually make these 14 feet wide as well in addition to these 10-foot queuing lanes?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that if that's helpful. So, to clarify the comment, the special permit is to reduce to a minimum of 14 feet, so the drive aisles are not meant to be any less than that, and there isn't a provision to make them less than that. And my question that you really just answered right now is, the drive aisle, based on how we interpret it, is that there are physical barriers, meaning that there is no way left or right, so to address the area where the three queuing, the bypass lane and the two queuing lanes going up the right side of the property, if there's no physical barriers and that is just striping, then I would not consider that enough of a physical barrier, personally, to call those 10-foot wide drive aisles, because nothing's really prevent, it's meant for necessary queuing, but it's not preventing anybody from getting out if they needed to. The two drive aisles in the lower part, the driveway to the dumpster and that interior one, I think if those can be 14 feet, that's ideal, and again, the width of the pay stations, I guess, is not really, I think, what we're intending as far as drive aisle width, the idea is that we don't want anywhere where major traffic flow and circulation will be going through is less than 14 feet, because then you start running into some hairy situations with fire apparatus and ambulance and larger trucks for instance. cause then you start running into some hairy situations with fire apparatus and ambulance and, and larger trucks, for instance. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, this time I'm sure.
Start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a number, number of questions for you. One of the questions I have, which pertains to the stormwater, is why can't you maintain your own stormwater and grow out the same out the back where Wamisett goes with their eventual ending spot?
The elevations don't work with, so they have wetland that directly abuts the rear of their site. We don't have that. We'd actually have to travel through this lot in the back to get there. And I don't even know that that would work from an elevation perspective and you'd be running pipe through another lot, require easements, that sort of thing. There is a wetland, and I should show it, should've been on that plan. The nearest wetland that we have is this wetland showing here, okay? There's the only way, first of all, that you could even feasibly get stormwater discharge to that, given the grades on site, is you would have, you're going to have to run a pipe underneath Collab Road, right, with a new easement and outlet it on the bank of the wetland. It's, that's gonna be tight. One, Mass EP isn't gonna allow that. And I know that based on, one, they aren't gonna want, they, they will never allow you to completely modify a drainage pattern, right? Right now, everything goes here. They're not gonna say, oh, you can send, you could just take all this area that goes somewhere else and send it to our wetland, no chance. And I know that for a fact, for the context of the site, because when this drainage structure was installed, that I'm talking about where everything drains to, that there was an NOI associated with that work, right? And, and Mass EP specifically made the comment that there's no way we're allowing extra drainage to go to our wetland. So we have to file an NOI that'll never get approved by them, nor is it really what should be done. We should try to use the, continue the onsite drainage patterns as best as we can.
It just seems like any of the projects that we do, the water that's on site should be maintained by that particular site and, and not go somewhere else.
So it will be. Everything we're proposing here is going to be maintained by, by this owner. There's already, anything that's on their site, yes, they maintain that. But we're not, everything that we're proposing here, we will maintain.
Okay.
So, and they're getting.
But you're gonna be using the, the underground, under Wamisett lanes?
Correct.
Right?
And they, and we are today as well, right? So we just took the situation and we made it much better, cause now we're sending way less stormwater from volume and runoff rate perspective, in addition to it's treated, it's clean. So we just, we actually just decreased the maintenance that's gonna be required on their site technically, cause we're sending clean water and less of it.
If I could add one thing to that, Mr. Fratelli. If the board doesn't have a copy of the drainage, I'm happy to give it to them, but this.
Have a copy of it, no?
Yeah, I'll give it to the board. But this was specifically created for the benefit of our lot. And it's pretty express that it's gonna run with the land regardless of what owner or development is taking place there. Really, the, the issue that was raised by the abutter is that, you know, they don't want us overburdening that easement and creating additional water flow. But as we've shown in our calculations, and the abutters engineers have not shown in their calculations, we have a substantial reduction in terms of what we're putting over there compared to existing conditions today. So we have the express right to use that area of the property for the drainage. It was a negotiated resolution that allowed Wamisett to develop their site because they were creating stormwater problems for our site and, and we're substantially decreasing flow, so.
Okay. I, I recall, and I was on the board back then, that the previous, that the greenery was discharging a lot of water onto the motel that was there previously. So, you know, whether, whether it was accurate or not, I mean, I can recall that that was an issue back in the day. So, but, and I think.
I'll take this opportunity to also say that this is, to me, no different than what we just had on Shawshin. And we're not gonna get into litigating easements and that kind of stuff. If they present it, that they have the right to use it and that the numbers work.
Yep.
Turns out that's not right, then that's gonna halt your pro, your project after you're done with us. But we just set that standard when we weren't gonna get into the legal back and forths with Shawshin Street. To me, this is the same thing. It either is or it isn't. You're presenting as it is, if we approve it and it turns out that that's not true, that's between the property owners and we're not gonna litigate it here.
I was just making an appointment, Chairman, and all of our other projects. All the water that's on site is maintained by that site and discharged by that site. You know, and this is, this is different, but I won't get into that anymore, so.
Mr. Chairman, I do agree with your comments a hundred percent. This is, that's a private land rights issue that can be redressed by private parties outside of this forum. The only reason that we brought that issue to the discussion point, it was one of the opposition points in the abutters council's letter. So through the engineering data and supplementing responses to the comment letters and providing, and looking into the grant of that easement, we at least wanted to respond to the board, to the board at context.
Yeah, no problem. I do like the new, the new plan compared to the old one. I like it, I like it that you have.
I'll go over there.
I like it you have it on that side. We have a bypass road going by, if somebody wants to get out for an emergency and can't go through the car wash, they're able to get out. So another question I had is, how many cars can queue once you come out of the car wash to get to the exit driveway?
Right, yeah, yep. So once you exit, you can fit three vehicles prior to the stop here. And then, and then once they exit, there's a, there's another four that can queue, queue in here.
Okay. I just don't wanna see anybody get stuck inside of that car wash.
Yep.
In the event you, you guys shut it down like, like you said in the past, so.
Right.
But it seems like you have increased the number of cars that can queue before they get, get stuck.
Yeah, we certainly have. It's probably more than might be required, but it, it's there, it's more than adequate. And on that note, the vehicles who exit here, they have the opportunity to turn right or left, right? Right being to go vacuum their car afterwards. And I would say in, in experience, I, I, that's what I tend to see. It's not to say they can't do it in either order, but not all the vehicle, the point is not all the vehicles that are exiting here are taking a left and immediately queuing to exit the site.
Right, so you can go right to the vacuum.
You could go right to the vacuum, sure.
So how far are the vacuums from abutters?
Exact dimension.
Road, and for that matter, Wamisett lanes?
Yeah, so from, so the vacuums are these, these little symbols here along the, the sidewalk. Those are the actual vacuum units. I don't have an exact dimension, but I can get it rough. That would probably be about fifteen plus there, forty-five, fifty, another thirty-five, eighty-five. I'd say it's probably about ninety feet at the, at a, yeah, probably about ninety feet roughly.
To the right?
To the, to the right, so to the Wamisett wall, essentially.
There's buildings on there, I believe, on Collab Road.
Yeah, there's, there's residential on the opposite side of Collab Road. To, I mean, to the property line here, not, not the houses are always a greater distance, but I mean, you've got about forty-five, fifty-two plus twenty, you got about, I don't know, seventy-five feet maybe.
Okay.
To the, to the property line and then obviously the additional to the units.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And noise-wise, do we, are we all okay noise-wise?
Yeah.
Your machines present a lot of noise?
Still, we actually, and I, I should've touched on that. We actually provided a noise study with our recent mission. And it was based on a recently constructed wash filth site, same, same, same thing, essentially, essentially. So the board should have received that. It essentially says that the noise study was, was conducted. It's, I actually had, I, I think it was like a media fifty-page document. But it says essentially that we meet, we're meeting the, the, the noise.
Decimal levels of the.
Decimal levels that are required.
Okay.
And again, that's on a, based on a real operational site.
I know you submitted a, uh, we, I got it tonight, the traffic study, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but.
Yep.
That'll be for future, I'm off that with Jim for now.
Mr. Lozati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, likewise, I like some of the changes you have up here, especially kind of the ability to, you know, get out from the top. I think that's, that's an improvement. As far as the, the nine-foot width on the, the turnstiles there, now that was specifically those are designed for the test size of a vehicle that'll fit in the car wash, right?
The nine-foot between the pay stations?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of the sweet spot for, for vehicles having adequate space, but not too much space, cause they end up opening their doors and getting out and slowing things down.
Okay. And there's, is there a scenario where a car that can't fit in the car wash gets through those turnstiles?
If, like a large vehicle that could go through here?
Yeah.
No, this'll, I mean, this'll fit typical, any typical vehicle, really, that would typically go through a car wash. Yeah, I mean, if they can meet, I guess, if they can meet the clearance of the car wash, they can, they're fine getting through there.
Right. And is there one of the, like the top bars?
Yeah, yep, they have the clearance part, yep.
Great. Yeah, cause I think that would be my only concern there, cause, you know, you can get out from the turnstiles and a little bit past them, but.
Before you stow the, the car wash?
That's, it doesn't look like there's a way out of there from that part, but. And then the other thing, kinda still somewhat related to the turnstiles, it looks like you have, you know, if you were to expand that bypass lane to, to fourteen feet, would that, would, or at least a part of that striping remain?
So if I was to, to literally change this to be dimensioned as fourteen feet on the plan, I, I would remove, I would be removing this kinda gourd patching area completely, right? This, this inside line here would just kinda continue down and then it would.
Okay, so you'd keep the inside line there?
That's how it would be, yeah, yep. I like to provide the separation just for the vehicles.
Yeah, that was gonna be my comment, because you have three lanes, three turnstiles, and if you don't have some sort of dividing.
It's supposed to like a tra, like trash trucks, you know, trash trucks are gonna take that route and give them a little bit of, little bit of separation from the pay station.
Okay. And was there a, was there a change to the signage plan or is it the same signage plan just with some clarifications?
Yeah, just the signage we're proposing throughout the site? Yeah, it changed as needed based on the revisions, as in, you know, stop, stop signs, do not enter signs, that type of stuff had to be revised to be relevant and correct. That's all it really was, it's the same kind of intent.
Cool, I think that's all my questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly a lot going on here. The, so how much signage do you have? You have multiple one-ways and, and whatnot happening towards the Main Street side of the site. So are you proposing various like no-left turn, do not enters? I mean, I just, I, I kinda have a feeling that, you know, if somebody comes into the site, you know, they first pull in on the right and they're thinking, oh, well, maybe I wanna go left and just go right to the vacuums, cause I see this long line of cars in front of me. And then when people come out, you know, I'm worried, I'm worried a little bit about, again, what would happen if you have somebody coming out from the car wash while somebody is going the wrong way, trying to shortcut to the vacuums?
Yep. So I'll say you, you caught me on an oversight in that I should've provided do not enter signs on either side of this. That, that's kind of addressing what you're.
There's another thing too, I mean, just to make a record, but that inner island, if you shape it differently.
Yep.
You can force the cars to have to go left while at the same time blocking a car.
Yep.
That's coming in off of Main Street from thinking they can go left, which is Mr. Champa's point.
Yep.
So I mean, that's an option as well.
Yeah, we could do that.
Just like we do usually with the cars when they're coming out on the main.
Show a little more turn on the bottom half of that.
So this can kinda come up and curve, I almost did that.
More the one towards Main Street, I would think, because that's the one that's gonna start what Mr. Champa was just talking about, which is someone coming in thinking, oh, I'm gonna go left and down to those, those vacuums.
Yep.
Because they don't, if it's shaped different, they're not gonna feel like they can do that.
Yeah, yep, so, yeah, this would've been trying to accomplish that via the stop and signage that I should've added. But furthermore, we can do the addition to that, we can re, kinda change the geometry of this to kinda force them that way and make it a little clearer that you can't take a left turn in there. Is that, is that correct? The intent sound right?
Yes, makes sense.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, subliminal, subliminal encouragement as far as go this way, not that way.
Yep.
And then do you have similar signage up at the end of the vacuums to prevent people from trying to go back up the access road and maybe go into the car wash lanes?
Yeah, so we put, this is our five-dash-one, that's a do not enter sign and we actually put pavement markings saying do not enter as well.
Okay. And then just for, I'm, I'm, when I see these really long queuing lanes on the right side of the site, I, I think of, you know, the old bank tellers. If you lined up at a teller, you never know which one is gonna be the fastest, so that's when they came up with the rope queuing. Couldn't you kind of clean that up and just keep it a little bit wider and a little bit shared until maybe you get closer to the curb? Then show the dedicated car wash lanes versus the bypass lane?
Yeah, I mean.
Cause nobody is gonna try to, I mean, unless they love, you know, Formula One racing, they're not really gonna try to stay within the lines of any of those lanes for the full four hundred feet or five hundred feet.
The only exception to that is, is a members-only lane where people have monthly passes and it's really, you have the sticker on the windshield and you, that's an express lane to pull up into. That's typically, I think that's the outer lane, right? Right side?
I think it is that.
Yeah, the outer lane on the right side. So that would probably be the one exception to that, but we can take a look at sort of having more of a funnel into the remaining lanes.
Yeah, I mean, where, where I ended this striping and put kind of these pavement markings was not a perfect science. It was, it's more so, we just try to maximize the queuing on the plan, it, it, to be honest, is really what we're doing. If you think cars could use a little more distance before they're kinda channelized, it's not an issue.
I'm just saying, it, you know, it, indicating that you want queuing for that much, you know? And again, it's just my opinion, I don't think you're really gonna need to queue yourself all the way back to there. So just give people the chance to just drive up and then once they get closer, they can pick one of the two non-member queuing lanes and then you have your dedicated lane for your members. You know, maybe just freeze that up a little bit coming in.
Drive, yeah, that's easier.
And, and maybe just, you know, as you're coming in now, you've already got a little bit of stuff going on and then once you're coming out, you have a lot more signage going on, so.
Right.
Maybe just freeze up the, the folks.
Okay.
I'm gonna switch over to your traffic study.
Yes.
So, let's see here. All right, just buffering back up, I did have it up, but I had to switch to the other PDFs. So I'm seeing here correctly, average weekday, seven fifty entering, seven fifty exiting. That's a lot of cars. And, you know, coming out going both ways on Main Street. I mean, are you comfortable that you're not gonna be regularly backing people up into the vacuum areas and back into the car wash? That every car, when it's done being washed, will exit out and be into a queue, not stuck inside, waiting for the queue to, to move them forward?
So we are confident, based on how we've seen other sites operate, that, that we do feel that this is adequate as far as the extra traffic numbers go. That I'm gonna let Bob Bollinger speak to a little bit more, if that's okay? However, on the traffic front, I, I do just wanna say, we received the review letter from BAI today of our traffic report, right? So we have, and we still kinda need to digest that a bit and kinda formulate a plan there. So I don't wanna say anything and there's irrelevant.
I think your pinch point here is gonna be cars trying to go south.
Yep.
As they're coming out at this volume.
Yep.
Traveling that area regularly myself, I mean, we have a lot of lights at Home Depot. We have another light at where, is that Old Main Street?
Pike Street? Pike, Old Main?
Well, I was gonna say Old Main Street, Pike Street, Ocean State, Job Lot. We have a lot of lights for, to try to get and open up that kinda traffic because we've had a lot of problems in the past where it's really, really challenging. And I, I think, you know, at this pace, and I forget what your operating hours were, off the top of my head. I thought it was ten to eight or eight to eight, something like that?
Seven thirty. Yeah, seven thirty was a seven.
It was about a twelve-hour window, so you're talking about sixty cars in, sixty cars out on average, which means your peak can be certainly more than that, so. And, you know, and if, and if some of that is during rush hour, I, and, you know, either morning rush hour or after, after an evening rush hour, I just, I could really see cars coming out of this and wanting to go south that they could really get backed up there. And it would only take two or three of those to back up before it's gonna clog up the cars that wanna go north.
Yep. So I will say, and those, that was kind of expressed by the board at our last meeting, obviously enough the traffic numbers at the time. We were trying to address that one, and I should've touched on this, but we actually shifted the building backwards as well to kinda pull, you can, you notice this exit lane exited very close to the Main Street. We shifted that back to provide the extra queuing. In addition to that is, you probably noticed, but we actually widened the, or we made this exit driveway twenty-four feet wide and that's to separate right and left turns. And it's, it's essentially just because we understand that traffic is an issue on the road. At least we're giving vehicles, you know, a, a place to kinda queue in their respective lanes for whatever direction they wanna travel. That way, you know, someone taking a left is just stuck here, preventing everyone else taking a right and then you have kind of a domino effect on the traffic. We're trying our best to provide, to prevent that with this configuration. Do you, would you like Bob to speak more to the traffic numbers at this time or?
I think it would be informational, if, I'll yield my seat to him.
I mean, it's up to, I mean, we could, you haven't had a chance to even go over the stuff, so I mean, you're kind of having it at this point, so it'd probably make more sense.
I think right now we're just. I think right now we're just offering our input.
Yeah, yeah. The feedback and then incorporate.
When we come in next time, we'll give you more elaborate presentation on response.
And we'll have our folks come in too. That way we can do that once at the next meeting.
Sure.
So my, my thoughts are that if, if the majority of your customers are Tewksbury residents and the majority of those residents live south of your establishment, not north, that, that left turn onto Route thirty-eight South could be, in, in practicality, you may find that to be a serious issue. And you did mention some other sites, I don't know if they abut a state highway or not as far as their entrances and whatnot, or the capacity on that highway or what towns they're in, but just, you know, having traveled this road back and forth many, many times, I've seen what happens with the traffic there. And there's reasons why, once you get past Pike Street, it widens to multiple lanes with left turns only and things like that. And I think the type of volume you're talking about, you know, I, I think we don't have the infrastructure there, it's out of our control because it's mass DOT, but I think without that type of infrastructure, there could be problems there. But again, I know it's gonna be addressed and there's some studying to be done. But I would just say that's one segment of this that you probably want to look at very closely.
Okay.
My general impression is, I do like how you clean this up. Obviously you have a lot of traffic flow, it's a car wash, it's a car related business. It's meant to move cars in and out very quickly. So in addressing the volume of traffic, now you've run into some other things, like multiple driveways too close together and some of the driveways are across from other driveways. So in order to try to fix one problem, you kind of opened up some other issues that you're, you're trying to get exemptions from. So I think that's still an area that, you know, probably deserves as much attention as you can afford it when you review your traffic studies.
Okay, understood.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'll pick up a little bit where Mr. Chamber left off. So I, I like, again, I, I would agree that the internal setup is better than before in terms of, you know, giving yourself some more room. One of the first things I would point out though, on your, on your ground, where you're going, where you potentially could come out and go right after getting your car done to go use the vacuums, you're gonna need more arrows so that the people coming in the other direction don't think it's a one way and use that entire width and then suddenly meet head on with a car coming that just got washed, you know what I mean? Because I could see where someone's been thinking, one way, one way, one way, one, one way, and then all of a sudden at the last minute, they've come around the curb and now they want to go to one of those vacuums and they can't imagine that there's gonna be a car coming head on at them. You know what I mean? Yeah, so I think those lines of the arrows have to be clear all the way down.
Okay.
They'd have to be maintained in good shape in perpetuity so that, you know, after everybody's rolling over them, the lines don't disappear, so that the, the people coming that, you know, and I don't know how many that is, how many are gonna get their car washed and then go to the vacuum, I have no idea. But any cars that are coming down there, since that's where all the parking is as well. You know, it's just gonna.
You don't want people driving on the outside.
That's, that's one of my other questions, not a, not a question, I guess I know how it's handled. The only other people probably parking here are either they're coming around to do just vacuuming, or they work there, just going the long way, right?
Exactly, yeah, it's just the longest, that's exactly that, yeah.
Now, if you scroll so I can see the, the exit onto Main Street, and you can blow it up if you want, but I just want to be up at the front right now. So beyond the, the changing of the island and whatnot that we just discussed, one, do you anticipate that mass DOT is gonna be okay with the two driveway cuts? With the street there and the driveway cuts for Wamisette and the intersection coming up? Have you had any discussions? Because obviously it blows your whole thing up if mass DOT says.
Yep, yeah, so we.
Nice but no.
Right, that, that could happen. We, we did submit these to them, so we're awaiting comments, I guess it's out of the realm of possibility.
We're all sort of at the mercy of mass DOT all along Main Street, but I'm just saying, I don't know what happens after that because if they say one, obviously a lot has to happen on the front of your property to explain to us what you do next kind of thing.
So, yeah, I will say that I kind of prepared a backup plan in case that happens, where I do have a layout that's essentially very, very similar to this, but it's, it's putting these driveways back into one.
So the, the next thing is to Mr. Chambers' point, and we've done this more recently, when we feel a little iffy about, you know, how things are gonna work once they're up and running. And we put in place, I forget what we're doing, six months, twelve months, when we do the review of how it's working?
Right, so we were having the applicants, as conditions of approval, submit full traffic reports at six months of operation, full operations and twelve months, and submit them to the town. And if there are any issues that we kind of come back to the board and discuss if there's any mitigation we can put in place to alleviate some of those issues, if there are any.
And, and to my point on that one, and this is again going to Mr. Chambers' comment, if it turns out that that left turn coming out is causing a problem, and whether that's a traffic problem, an accidents problem, so obviously we're gonna be looking for feedback from public safety, if, you know, the fire and police are constantly down there peeling people out of cars because they're trying to come out and go left on Main Street, then we figure, we've done something wrong.
Yep.
And that's gonna have to turn into a right exit only. So I, I just want you to be prepared for that as a possibility. If that's the feedback we get, that I'm certainly gonna be in favor, I'd be surprised if the rest of the board weren't also. And if public safety is telling us this is not gonna work if we keep doing this, then that can't hap, you know, we can't leave it like that. So it's gonna have to become, you know, some, some change to that exit to eliminate the left, whether it's some sort of rumble strip that forces you to go out and go right only, but just, you know, I think, put that also in your contingency because it's possible that that may be the case, you know, if, you know, this might work, and if does, fantastic. You know, I mean, it's no different than some of the gas stations, you come out, you go both way, you know, I mean, that's how the businesses exit if you can.
Yep.
If it turns out you can't, we're gonna have to deal with it. Trying to think, was there anything else on those? Did we, I can't remember at the beginning, did we have more renderings?
Yeah.
They're at the back, alright.
Yeah, they're at the end, signage as well as building elevations.
So my only other ones, I guess, check out those, the sounds, because I know, I don't know who it is down there, but some, someone or some, several someones seem to have a fit about the si, about the sound down there, because I know it keeps coming up at different boards and it's constantly discussing the, the amount of sound in that area. So, you know, we're gonna want to make sure that, you know, it's sticking to whatever it is everybody else down there is supposed to be sticking to, sound wise, because I know it's been an issue that keeps coming up and, you know, clogging the, clogging things up for others as well. I have no idea, it could be the people that own it now. I have no idea who it is that has the problems, but it's been something that's been brought up, so I'm gonna make sure you guys are gonna come in under whatever that num, number is everybody else has been working with on the vacuums. I assume the, I assume nobody can hear the car wash itself, it's just the vacuum.
Yeah, it's very quiet, yeah, as well as the backside.
Alright, okay, alright, that's it for me for right now. Obviously the traffic thing's gonna matter, so once you guys get into that.
We'll give a more elaborate presentation the next time.
And we'll bring our consultant in the next time so that way we can do that in one, one, one session rather than back and forth and back and forth. Alright, so with that, I'll open up the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Don Bornstein. I'm an attorney, my office is Johnson and Bornstein, we located at twelve Chestnut Street in Andover. I represent Wamisette Lane, Don McLaren Jr., I'm the principal there. We had a number of concerns that we'd raised to the board at the last active hearing session on this. We've got a bunch of information just in recently, so we just received the, the revised plans the end of last week, we've got some new materials today. We haven't been able to fully go through those materials, we haven't seen the sound study yet and we're very interested in that, so we would like to receive a copy of that. So I think for tonight, it sounds to me that the board is heading towards the continuance on this matter. I think the best strategy may be for us to reserve our comments for the, for that later meeting.
So you don't like, so you don't miss your chance? Is that what everybody else is thinking, that we're continuing this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just so you have the peace of mind, that's the expectation of the board as well, and I suspect the petition is.
As of, as of is for the applicant.
Yeah, okay, so I think you are correct.
Okay, very good, and I, we do have some concerns about that drainage easement, but again, we'll talk about drainage and those other issues. I do have Dick Kuko with me tonight as well, who was certainly interested in addressing the board, but we'll save all that for the next session.
All right, if I could just preface something on that. So the design that's being presented to us, they're saying that they're reducing the amount of outflow into that drainage through this design. And the chairman has said that we're not gonna litigate whether or not they have the rights to that easement and that drainage. So when you come back, you're either gonna confirm or refute, or refute their calculations as to whether or not they are reducing and in fact improving the amount of usage that's going into that drainage, which means it would actually ease the burden borne by the Wamisette Lane's property, so. So we want to stick to just, you know, this is what they're presenting, what they say it's gonna do. If you can, if Mr. Kuko can provide calculations that say otherwise, we can consider that, but beyond that, we're not gonna have the back and forth of, yes, I can, no, I can't.
We, we've set that precedent with other hearings, so I want to stick to that, you know, and if it's a private thing, it's a private thing. If our engineers are telling us that the numbers work, if you have a different view, we'll take it in consideration and talk to engineering about it, but beyond that, I don't want to, we're not gonna get into the can we, can't we? You know, that's, that's gonna be for you guys to sort out if there's an actual fight about that, it just can't be here.
No, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, I think the, the legal position as to property rights for the use of that easement is probably best reserved for, for judge and a court, not necessarily for this board. We will have some comments around drainage that I think will be important to express to the board.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else with any quick?
No, thank you.
Any other, anyone else with any questions, comments or concerns at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any further questions from members of the board at this time?
Nothing here, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so then we have seven forty-five on the twenty-fifth for this. Do I have a motion to continue till then?
I think we want to continue beyond that.
Oh, you want to go two meetings out to the eighth, the new April eighth?
Based on the traffic comments, that's, that's really.
That's fine.
No, I'm sorry, I just want to confirm, we're gonna, we're going to need that time to do new counts.
Sure.
So then we will look, I don't have that in front of me, do we have a time available?
There are no hurry hearings currently scheduled for that meeting, so they can be at seven o'clock.
Okay, yeah, so we'll make you the first hearing on the eighth, seven PM, so we have a motion to continue this till April eighth at seven PM.
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
We appreciate your time, thank you.
Obviously, you know, the, the more you get in, the sooner, you know, if you treat it like you were coming in for the next meeting, all the better, because then that stuff can be processed, but that's up to you.
If we run into any issues and we need an additional two weeks beyond that, we'll reach out well in advance to.
Yeah, the one after that's what, the end of April now, so, okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to agenda item E, which is fourteen thirty-eight Main Street, who has requested to be continued to our next meeting. We have them penciled in for seven thirty-five. Do I have a motion to continue the hearing till seven thirty-five on the twenty-fifth?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries unanimous, continued. That brings us to agenda item correspondence, we had no correspondence, other business not known at the time of posting this agenda. Does anybody have any such things?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I'll note, and it just because it's informational and interesting to me, is that, just from my perspective, I thought it was a positive that the Attorney General didn't waste any time dealing with the rogue nation, in dealing with the MBTA communities, so that, you know, you would have that sort of firing up all over the place, you know, coming into everybody's town meetings, because that's gonna be a disaster, I think, if people just thought it was a free for all. Doesn't mean nothing's gonna happen, I just think it takes the edge off it. You know, they made the threat and they followed through on it, so you at least know that they're serious. What happens after that, we'll see, but at least it wasn't a veiled threat. Everybody can make their decisions from there, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, just a question to Alex. My understanding, my under, my understanding the fact that there was a meeting set up to discuss the MBTAs with potential developer in town and so forth?
So we discussed it with the, the largest parcel property owners in town, being seventeen seventy-seven Main Street and nineteen hundred.
Yeah, okay, I was, I was, I was in a discussion with Mr. Ginsburg about that and I kind of agreed with some of the discussions you guys had at the meeting and I'd be willing to probably vote in the affirmative in the next time, so.
Nice long discussion next meeting, I'm sure.
Yes. I just, I, I don't think, just I hope, like, let's be prepared for this, because I want to make sure we can answer everything that we need to in here, that, I don't, I'm not, I'm just turning because you were nodding at the time, I wasn't directing it at you, Ms. Lauter, but for all of us, let's, you know, I want to try to keep that tight as best we can. So if people have questions or comments, that we stick to the facts and, you know, we, we answer those and get as much as we can done here. I mean, obviously, we can't stop anything from going on after it leaves us, whatever vote we make, but I think the less confusion leaves this room, the better it is for each process along the way after that. So whatever we can do to make that, you know, as painless as possible, I would be in favor of, I hope everybody else is, so, you know, I'm sure there'll be some, you know, potential hot tempers and whatnot, I will do my best to keep those under control as well. But, you know, everybody be, be prepared, I suppose.
And it's also good, Mr. Chairman, it'll be prior to the election, that we discussed that at our meeting on the twenty-fifth, is it twenty-ninth, whatever it is, so that'll maybe clarify some questions people may have, we'll be discussing it here, so forth and so on, so.
Would it be, and, and I think this is something that, you know, we're gonna, that we could potentially run into. If someone tries to amend the MBTA zoning article at town meeting, will that also invalidate our submission and possibly?
We had this conversation already, because we've had things like that before, I suspect that this is gonna be one of those ones where most, if not all amendments are going to be difficult, because of one, the, we've set this standard as well at the meetings, is the unintended consequences are gonna be almost impossible to figure out at town meeting.
Right.
And even some of the intended consequences, consequences are problematic. So I would be stunned if we don't work under the same sort of thing as we have with a couple of these other ones recently, where you, you go messing around with it, there's too much change, especially since these things have already been vetted by the state, that if people start trying to mess around with them at town, town meeting, I would, again, I can't guarantee it, but I would suspect that they're probably gonna get shot down as, you know, unintended consequences that cannot be determined at that time and then ruled out of order, but I can't, I just suspect.
Yeah, we can flesh out that discussion at the May, March twenty-fifth hearing and that can be a part of any of the board's recommendations to go to town meeting.
Yeah, I think we did that once before, where we said something about, you know, not recommending amendments to, it was the bylaw, it had to have been the bylaw.
Yes, it was.
But that's where that came up, was the bylaw became, you know, if it, if it's something you can't figure out, if it's jacking up a provision that you can't, and or it's gonna make you, you know, non-compliant with the law, then you have a problem and you can't make those changes, because you're, you're undoing something that's, you don't know what you're doing.
Just gonna add more confusion to town meeting and more confusion to the residents that want to vote on these issues and so forth and so on, it just, just throws a monkey wrench into the whole process, so. If they have questions, hopefully they'll come to our meeting on the twenty-fifth, maybe we can answer them for.
That's, that's what I would hope, is that they would come here and ask their questions, formulate and maybe get some informed response from Ms. Lauter as far as the potential consequences of an amendment. as the potential consequences of an amendment. I just, some of the, some of what I've heard is that Tewksbury might be unique in the sense that we might be looking at a double whammy with all the state hospital land and the MBTA land, or, you know, the MBTA zoned parcels that we've approved as the town.
See, I mean, but that's, and we'll probably get into this next time, but to me, I feel like they're separate things, because one is an unknown, the other one is one we are required to deal with right now, and truthfully, and I'm not, I don't mean this to be, to be sarcastic, but that's what we have the elected officials to deal with if and when the state hospital becomes something that's being looked at, that's their job too, to make sure that whatever our interests are, are addressed, when that second possible thing happens, this is an actual thing, like, we don't have, this is happening, you know what I mean, whereas the other thing is a potential something to happen, but you don't have it now, and I would think that would be where they should be stepping in and dealing with that at the state house, and dealing with, rather than trying to figure out how to address an unknown that doesn't exist yet through a different process, I don't know.